Of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The media documents are in the white folder, and if you intend to speak today, if you would just sign in on our white sheet with your name and address, and then when you speak, you just have to give your county residence and your name. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bender.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to routine business, regular business, excuse me. Item number ten is a public hearing to consider a lease agreement for the Girl Scouts to use a portion of the Wall Lake Park. Scott Anderson, good morning, Scott.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and today we have an advertised hearing for a proposed lease agreement with the Girl Scouts. This is for a use for a portion of Wall Lake Park. The public, I'm sure, is familiar that the Girl Scouts have been using in a, with a cooperative agreement, a portion of Wall Lake Park for many, many years, probably thirty or forty years. It precedes me. This is a lease agreement that we go through every four years, and it has been reviewed by the state's attorney and worked with, through, with the Girl Scouts, and we, we have a lease agreement before you to consider. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Scott at this point? Commissioner Kerski?
Scott, exhibit one says restricted area. Is this when the Girl Scouts aren't using it open to the public, or is this strictly?
It, it is their area to primarily use, and if you look through the agreement, that's their area to maintain. They have an obligation to maintain that through the summer, so they mow that. So it's restricted in the, in the sense that we, we don't allow, we don't have, like, public rentals in that area. It's primarily their, theirs to use. Now, there's no fence, there's nothing stopping the public from walking through there.
Okay.
So it's restricted in a sense that that's their area, their designated area to use.
I see that the Winona Lodge is there, so again, a great tribute to benefactor for our county with the Lions family.
Yeah. That's, if the public is not aware of this fact, that the Lions family donated this land, I'm not sure when. I worked with the state's attorney, it was a long time ago, to create a park, and we actually have the old stone structure that was the Lions' summer cabin, and it's called the Lions Lodge, and that's available for rent to the public. It's a beautiful stone building, sort of typical or reminiscent of, like, some of the houses you see in Pierre. It's made out of all kinds of different field stones that they collected from all over the world. It's very interesting. There's interesting history, but that is available. It's basically just a, a two-room, open cab, cabin facility. There's no kitchen or bathroom in it, so that is part of it, but...
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
There is a representative from the Girl Scouts here, and this is a public hearing, so he may like to say something.
So this is a public hearing, so is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the lease? So it'd be your opportunity to say something.
Hi there. My name is Michael Neiman. I am the Director of Properties and Fleet for the Girl Scouts Dakota Horizons, Minnehaha County. Been with them for about two years now, and during that time with Girl Scouts Dakota Horizons, I have overseen the Wall Lake Girl Scout Use Area, is what we designate it, in many aspects, including repairs, reservations, dealing with vendors, outside organizations, things like that. We do, we've had the opportunity to work with members of the YMCA, volunteer groups, county staff as well, to provide a more positive experience for our members at that property. And to give you some perspective, that property usually serves around twenty-five hundred youth per season, which is huge in this community, this day and age, I should say. We'd like to ask the county to continue to utilize this property, and I guess build upon the foundation of our predecessors to just continue to serve the community as a whole, and learn and have positive experiences with our members. Our members today will help shape them and prepare them for the responsibilities of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman. Is there any questions for Mr. Neiman? Is there, is there anyone opposed to this lease? I'm not seeing anyone.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve, approve the lease with the Girl Scouts on the, a portion of Wall Lake. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Item number eleven is authorize the chairman to sign a temporary construction easement for the Ellis and Eastern Bridge Rehab Project. Carol, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Before you today is a request to authorize the chairperson to sign a temporary construction easement for the Ellis and Eastern Bridge Rehab Project. I'm going to ask Trish if she could pull up the map for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Item number twelve is authorize the Minnehaha County Emergency Management to apply for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Homeland Security Grant. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. Jason Germon, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. I'm here again every year for this. It's something we've, we've relied on for equipment, and this year and last year, we utilized it for some cybersecurity upgrades to the county. I know you're all familiar with this, so I'm just here for approval for us to apply for this grant.
Any questions for Jason on the grant? Are there any comments from the public on this grant? Then I would look for a motion. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Kerski?
So once you apply for it, and if you're approved, then it comes back to us to accept it? Is that the process?
That can be the process. I don't recall what happened last year. I don't think, I think once it's approved for us to apply, yes, I'll come back and we can accept if that's what you want.
Sometimes grants come with strings.
Yes. Generally, these don't have many strings attached. If it's equipment, and it's something like, maybe, like, I think when we purchased the Bearcat, I believe we came back in front of the commission for approval on that because it was such a high-dollar and unique item. Some of the other items, like, I don't believe I came back yet last year when we were going to provide for the courthouse or for the county for some cybersecurity. So it's been kind of a case-by-case basis, but I can certainly come back in front of you again when we decide on...
Two dash zero seven, structures fifty dash three thirty-seven, one thirty, replacement. M C twenty-two zero nine, structure fifty dash one forty-four dash zero twenty, replacement. Minnehaha County twenty-two dash ten, structure ten dash one thirty-seven dash zero four zero, replacement, and the Minnehaha County twenty dash fourteen, structure fifty dash two seventy-two dash zero three, replacement. Jacob.
Morning, Commissioners.
That was a mouthful of numbers.
Yes. Jacob Mars with the Highway Department. I figured it would be easier that way than making them each individual agenda items, so we got them done in one fell swoop. This is a requirement by the South Dakota Department of Transportation to guarantee that the county takes the responsibility for any easements, right-of-way needs, and then utility relocations for the bridge projects that we were applying for under the big improvement grants through the state of South Dakota. We've done a couple of these in the last six months as well. Nothing out of the ordinary on any of these, any of these four locations, so I would just ask if you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Jacob? Commissioner Bender?
Hi, Jacob. Since we're going to approve several opportunities for bid grants, I wonder if you could just explain a little bit about that program, and you'll see that we're gonna, there's different reimbursement levels, and so I just, so that people can understand why some of these are at forty percent, some are at fifty, and some are at sixty.
Yep. So the, the Bridge Improvement Grant is a fund through the state of South Dakota. They help out local cities, counties, to replace structures that we maybe can't pay for entirely on our own, and they have a scoring system that they use in order to qualify for the grant. The ones that are awarded, are awarded based on a point system. As part of this point system, you get more points if you take on more funding on your end. The minimum amount of funding required from the participating agency is twenty percent. Any participation over that will gain you additional points, up to an additional ten points if you go in at fifty percent of the requested grant amount. So looking at the numbers and when we want to do these projects in the next couple of items, we have adjusted what our, what our funding request is so that we qualify better on those projects.
Thank you. Great plan. Any other comments? Is there any public comment on these bridge fixes? Okay. We'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
No motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen is consider a motion to adopt a resolution to apply for the Bridge Improvement Grant funding at an eighty-twenty match.
So same, same project, just a different, a different piece of documentation required by the DOT. This particular structure is on County Highway one oh four, just west of Interstate I twenty-nine. That would be the Del Rapids exit. So just to the west there, we have a structure that's degrading pretty bad. This one, we're applying at the maximum amount. Our score is still pretty low. It's only a forty-three ninety-seven on this one, and we anticipate awards being made somewhere in the mid to upper forties, probably. There is some additional funding that was granted this year to go towards this project, so we're hoping, hoping that the scores will be a little bit lower, but this is a structure that we'd really like to get replaced in two thousand and twenty-four.
Questions on that bridge? Is there any public comment on that bridge? Can we look for a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion in a second. This one needs a roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen is consider a motion to adopt a resolution to apply for a Bridge Improvement Grant funding at a sixty-fourty match.
This particular structure, we had originally intended on bidding this week to construct this next summer. With how bids came in for County Highway one forty-nine, they, it ended up being over budget. You'll see that agenda item next week as a, as a request to award County Highway one forty-nine for reconstruction, but taking this bridge out of our construction for this year and putting it into the big grant for next year allows us to maybe gain some funding from the state and do our county highway project at the same time. So this one is at a, a forty percent cost share on the, on the county side, and it's a, it's a township structure that's about halfway in between Valley Springs and Garrettson.
Comments from the commission? Comments from the public? Look for a motion.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
With these three resolutions, again, these are just applications. Do you come back to us to brief us when they're, on the end results?
We definitely can.
Okay.
Yep. The, the DOT Commission usually makes awards in, I want to say, March, so we can definitely come back and discuss what the results of their actions were at that time.
Be nice to know, because obviously, we're taxpayers of the county, are big contributors to the, the grant funding, so thank you.
Very much so. And some of them, some of them we expect to be successful on, and some of them, we're applying this year in anticipation that maybe next year, when we apply again, they'll, they'll look at it and be, they, they must really want this bridge done. They've applied once. What can we, what can we do to help them out? So.
Commissioner Bender?
So Jacob, I do really appreciate how strategic the highways department has been with these grants and looking at projects. I'm wondering if you could give just a little background about what you're seeing with bids that are coming in and how high they've been and why that's causing you to use this strategy.
Sure. So we've bid a couple of projects this year. One would be structure two seventy-nine, one forty, which is just north of Brandon on County Highway one thirty. That was a, a bridge deck replacement. It came in. We bid the exact same project last year that we did South of Sherman. We updated our estimate for, for this project this year, based on this year's prices, and it still came in twenty percent over, over budget. Last week, we bid a bridge deck overlay, three thirty oh twenty-six, and that came in thirty percent over estimate. So the construction prices, we thought we had seen maybe the peak last year, and then it was going to level off. That's, that's not the case. It's still, it still continues to go up. Yep. So in order to help out our budget, we are, we're going after more grant funding opportunities as well. And there are some federal funds as well that it's going to take a little bit more, more front-end work on our end in order to apply for those, but we're going to apply for some federal grants as well.
Yeah, so I just really appreciate you leveraging our tax dollars with other available money to try to do these projects, because I think one of the most astounding things to me when I came on the commission was how much a bridge costs. These are big-ticket items, so thank you.
Yep.
Is there any public comment on this bridge? Okay, then I look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nineteen. Oop, went in with you, Jacob.
Same type of deal.
Oh, no, no, there is, you're, according to mine, you're finished.
Oh, did?
I think we have eighteen.
We passed all three of them?
I think we did eighteen without discussion.
We did eighteen, which was the fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
Right? Correct? Yes. We did, yeah. It was kind of, I was looking at my notes, too. Did we finish them all? We did.
Let's do some more.
Exactly. Item under nineteen is consider a resolution to dissolve the Minnehaha County TIF number two. Ben, auditor.
Good morning. Commissioner's Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So we have a resolution in front of you today to consider dissolving TIF, Minnehaha County TIF number two. That TIF was created back in two thousand and ten to create that, that TIF number. This is the property that South Dakota, or SDN Communications, that we see west of Sioux Falls, right south of I ninety. That was the TIF, TIF area. We have received a total reimbursement, including interest, of five hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars and forty-four cents. So all of the funds have been remitted, and so we're in a position to dissolve that TIF. I ask for your approval on that.
Any questions for Ben on the TIF?
That's our only TIF.
It is correct. We have no other TIFs outstanding.
That's Minnehaha County TIFs.
Our only TIF.
Our only TIF. Is there any questions from the public? Okay, we'll look forward.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion in a second with roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty is consider a resolution to correct Resolution M C twenty-two thirty-two. Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. Back in September, September twenty-seventh, the Minnehaha, Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners approved the annual budget that included our tax levies for two thousand and twenty-three. At that point, then we submitted our budget and levies to the state of South Dakota. After the state reviewed it, they had an adjustment to our utility values that go into the abstract values. That change resulted in a change to our general county purpose levy. The, your levy that you approved at the end of September was two point six three four. With that corrected utility value, it changed the levy to two point six three five. So we are here today to ask you to approve the resolution before you to show the corrected levy from two point six three four to two point six three five. That was the only change to the budget.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the public?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion in a second with a roll call vote.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Susan. Item number twenty-one is, is discussion to consider the two thousand and twenty-three elected department head's salaries. Carrie Dever. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We're asking for a discussion on elected department head salaries so that we can prepare the annual resolution and bring it back to you next week. You probably recall from past discussions that this resolution has two main parts. The first is about base salaries for elected roles. That's to give elected individuals or people running for an office an idea of what the base salary would be for somebody coming into that role. The second part is a discussion on salaries for what the current incumbents, the people who currently hold office, would be earning in the upcoming year. A little different this year that you really have a third discussion point, too, because you'll have some people who haven't taken office yet, but will be in the upcoming year, so that would be the third part of today's discussion. There's a couple items attached for you to give you an idea of what we're looking at, but really, the first part of the discussion is, if you look back at last year's resolution, if you want to adjust at all the minimum annual base salaries for the county offices. Perfect. So under number one, those are the bases that you set last year. I'm looking for feedback on whether or not you would like to adjust them for two thousand and twenty-three.
Any comments, discussion? Commissioner Bender?
I'm, I'm comfortable leaving them where they are. I think that, I think they're a good base for new people coming in who don't have any experience coming into the office, and I think that that was what we were considering when we established those.
The other?
I'm of the same opinion.
Okay. And see, I think that's our consensus. Okay.
All right. Then for the next portion is really a discussion about what do you want to do for the five people who today are in office in these roles. And for that, I've attached a couple of documents that you've seen before during budget and in past years to give you an idea of some factors to look at. And really, this comes down to maybe three to four different things that you want to look at. First, you have given a comparison of where, if I can have you go back to the one that you were on. Yep, perfect. Thanks. This gives you a comparison of where our elected officials stand in comparison to the appointed department heads. This is comparing apples to oranges. I want you to be aware of that. So if you look at the column with, that says salary with an asterisk, all the people who are not highlighted, those are the salaries of those individuals as they go into January of two thousand and twenty-three, so their two thousand and twenty-three adjustments are shown. The elected individuals, of course, since you haven't made decisions about two thousand and twenty-three salaries, you're looking at two thousand and twenty-two. I've also included a column for you about salary after step. Some of your appointed department heads are still eligible for a step increase, and that gives you an idea of what they would be earning in the upcoming year. If you go down to the next attachment, there's a couple other items to look at. That first column, of course, is what those elected officials are making this year. The yellow columns show you what the market data is, and every year I give you the same caution that the market data is only as good as how many data points there are and who, who are in those offices. So some of, it's just really there to give you a measurement of what other comparable counties and organizations are paying for those roles or similar roles. Another caution on this is we're looking at two thousand and twenty-two data to determine two thousand and twenty-three salaries. So all of those, like Pennington County and Lincoln County, they're all having similar discussions about this time of year, about what they want to be paying in two thousand and twenty-three. The data I'm showing you is what they were being paid as they came into two thousand and twenty-two. So if they've made adjustments during the year, it's not reflected here, and of course, it doesn't have the two thousand and twenty-three salary. The last column is meant to give you a point of comparison between the elected department head and their chief deputy. So that last light blue column gives you an idea, or gives you the actual amount that their chief deputies would be earning as they go into January two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. Questions for Carrie on the graphs that we have? Comments? This is always a hard part of the year. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I appreciate all that data, and it's, and we've had a little time to look at it and think about it, so I have been thinking about it. In some respects, I really think we did a disservice to these elected officials because they have been serving for a long time, and they did not get the benefit of the salary increases that we gave to all of their staff during this year to try to adjust to inflation and market conditions. And so I think personally that it is only fair to catch those folks up as we go into the next year with the salary increases that their staff got this year, as well as the salary increases that their staff will get at the beginning of the year, plus the step that their staff will get. I think that will just bring equilibrium back into our system, make sure that we don't have people supervising folks who are earning more than they do just because of, you know, we've made some pretty significant adjustments this year to try to keep up with the market and the inflation and, and those kinds of things. And I think that, you know, I think we have, I mean, there's quite a range when you look at those salaries, but I think that that range makes sense. I'd like to keep that, that range. You know, when you look at the sheriff, you know, he's got, he's been in that role for twenty-five years, and I think he has over maybe forty-five years of public service. He supervises half the staff for Minnehaha County, so I mean, I think that deserves to be a highly paid position. The state's attorney also has a large staff. He's the chief law enforcement officer for our county and, you know, has required to have advanced degrees. So I just, I think I personally would be in favor of doing, I think it's a fourteen and a half percent, if you look at the total increases that staff have gotten over last year, will get at the beginning of next year in their step. I would do that for everybody on that group. Won't cover the new people who are newly elected, but the folks that have, are returning in that office. That's what I would do.
Additional thoughts, comments?
Madam Chair.
For both?
Commissioner Bender is right on, I believe, and, you know, these are all real jobs. I know the highest-paid employee for the federal government is the football coach at West Point, and I suspect that SDSU has a highly-paid employee as well in that position. These people are not, these are real jobs. Being the sheriff, phone call in the middle of the night, you know, for a snowmobile accident, inmate that's passed away. I know that our Register of Deeds came in on her day off one time to deliver a marriage license to a couple that had not thought ahead more than five or six hours. In any case, these are real jobs, helping our citizens, and they deserve everything they get.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kerski?
I guess I'm, also am supportive, primarily because I think it's important that we raise everybody together, and that's exactly what we're doing here. We're treating our department heads, elected officials, at, all at the same level as we do every employee in the county, and it's just fairness. I would just add that this fiscal year has been different than any year that I can ever remember. I think competition, the market, being able to work from home, which hardly any of these individuals would be able to do, makes a big difference in how we keep competitive, and I, I'm in favor of doing exactly what was discussed.
And I'm in favor, too. I think Commissioner Bender laid out really well the thought process that I think we all have worked through as we've walked, looked at these numbers, and there've been years when we've, I believe we've had a zero percent. If not zero, we've had one. There've been times where our employees have received no increases, and in order to stay up with the market and to keep the employees we have and to stop the bleed, we have had to raise our rates. So this was just a discussion today, so this will be on the agenda next week, and I think, do we have one more thing?
The last thing is just to clarify how you would like, because this will apply, then, to the five people who are currently in office, and I'll bring back those figures for your approval next week as part of the resolution. The last component really is, what would you like to be providing for right-to-pay for the two newly-elected individuals who'll be taking office during two thousand and twenty-three? Do you want to go with those base salaries that are part of the resolution as what come in, or were you looking at potentially something else?
Commissioner Bender?
I would say we establish the base for that reason, so that we would have a salary to start new people with no experience in that office, and I, so I think we should stick with that strategy.
Okay. All right. We'll make sure the resolution reflects that, then.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this discussion? All right. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number 22 is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement fixing county payments for the medical screening for the first day of care of persons on South Dakota codified law 24A-10 holds. Carol Muller?
Good morning, commissioners. This particular contractor agreement has been in process for a long time, and one of the things that Minnehaha County does is work with involuntary mental health holds, and it's a significant process and involves a lot of experts and expertise in order to make sure that we do this all right, and not only by the law, but that we also do it the right way for the people that are, that are struggling on a mental health hold or on a potential mental health hold. So in this agreement, what we have, there was an old agreement that was done 10 years ago. That agreement goes away and is replaced by the new agreement that you have before between Minnehaha County and Avira Behavioral Health. The concern that the hospital has, understandably so, is they want to make sure when somebody comes into the hospital that they are physically able to care for them, that there's not an underlying issue that would be of concern. So what this does is establishes a flat fee of $100,000 for the year that we would pay. The advantage to doing this is that this is less than what Medicaid rates would be. What we've agreed to, though, is that we're going to get, we're going to throw a lot of the paperwork out. We spend a lot of time shuffling paperwork in this particular process. So we are going, they're still going to do reports to us, but it's not going to be individual billings that take and come through. And then we'll do $100,000 for the current fiscal year, and then next year we'll do four quarterly payments. Questions I can answer for you?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner, please.
So if someone has a mental illness or a mental issue, and they're brought in, and then they find out that they also have lung cancer, does that, you know?
That would not be part of this. That would be treated underneath as, would go back to human services.
Thank you.
If somebody came in and had fallen down because of a mental issue and broke their arm, we just don't want to be covering the costs and need to make sure we figure out how that goes forward. I think that's kind of what this contract is about.
It makes sure that they're ready to, that there's, that the hospital knows exactly what they're getting.
Right.
And walking into when somebody comes into the system.
Yep. So Commissioner Kerski?
So I'm going to clarify for me, the $100,000, once it's expended because of patient volume and that type of thing, do, are we done paying, or how much do we pay?
Underneath the system, we're done paying. We do obviously have the options and have talked about it, that if there becomes a huge discrepancy, that we'll come back to the table.
Okay.
And have discussion about that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Okay.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Bender?
I'd just like to say a public thank you to Carol and to the state's attorney's office, because this has, it has been a long process, and it has required a lot of behind-the-scenes work. It's easy to summarize in two minutes at a commission meeting, but that doesn't mean there hasn't been hours and hours. And I think that this arrangement is, is going to be a great benefit to the county, to the citizens that are served, and also work well for our partners. So I think, I thank them for coming up with a workable solution.
I think they've been working on it for over two years, so this is a lot of hours behind this. So any public comment? And look for a motion, please.
So move, Benega?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the opportunity for public comment. Mr. Boneander, good morning.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Rick Boneander from Valley Springs, 26268 486th Avenue. Just like to comment on a couple items today. Number one, I'm going to request the county commission to send a letter to the PUC regarding Navigator Greenway application to construct a CO2 pipeline through eastern Minnehaha County. You ask why? Well, like with Summit, which you did there, FSMA has stated in May of this year that the federal government has insufficient standards and regulations in place to operate safely. The second reason is limited development opportunities for housing of families and business development in that part of the county. I have, I value the family and friends and neighbors of Minnehaha County as a fifth-generation resident. My great-great-grandfather immigrated from Sweden when the railroad ended at Worthington, Minnesota. My great-great-grandmother had to buy flour in Sioux City because there was no Sioux Falls at that time. They founded Beaver Valley Lutheran Church, which was started in what is today is the Beaver Creek Nature Center. My family, friends, and neighbors have done more for the growth and development of Minnehaha County than Blacklock, Blackrock, the Laurel, and PG&E has or ever will. I would encourage you to drive out to Brandon and the Valley Springs area, look at the beauty, the growth and the development that has occurred since I've been a child since Secondly, John Boehner has nothing on me when it comes to motion, let's put it that way right away, okay? I would like to thank Commissioners Cindy and Jeff for their dedication to this county commission. Cindy, for your caring and comfort, it's been appreciated. And Jeff, you are my brother, and you have a special place in my heart. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick, for coming. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go on to Commissioner Liaison Reports.
This morning, excuse me, Commissioner Heiburger and I met with our public defenders staff, department head and top staff, and kind of an annual review, and you will all find in your inbox probably now or very shortly, kind of their annual report, kind of outlining all the training they've done, their work with specialty courts, their involvement in the community, the challenges that they faced. Their turnover appears high, but in reality, the turnover from the previous two years, they hired back people that had left, thinking that the pastures were greener, and then they came back. So it was actually not as maybe negative as it would appear. I would tell you that my, my opinion is our public defenders office is very well managed. They do a great job of trying to keep the morale high, and just with their involvement in their office, the different things they do, some of the challenges they've had this year, back in the beginning of 2022, we were, they were told that they're going to have new offices and remodels. It'll be done here hopefully by the end of February, so kind of drug that along probably a little longer than it needed to be, but just the way the process works sometimes, so they're happy to be where they are. In reality, in the future, room is going to be an issue for them, or where to put if they do need to hire additional staff. I, I'm comfortable with the presentation they gave us and the environment that they're working in right now.
I would add, we had a fairly lengthy discussion about involuntary commitments, and there's a graph in there when you look through that data that shows the decrease in involuntary commitments that are accepted and an increase in the number of people who are waiting for competency evaluation in four, in the last four years. It's a huge change in that graph. It just, you know, we had a long discussion about it, and it just shows we are, we have a huge gap in there as to people who maybe have filed for involuntary commitment on a loved one, and then it doesn't make it through to treatment, and what's happening in that middle spot. That's hopefully something that the link will be addressing as we continue to figure out the direction of the link and how to better approach involuntary commitments. We did talk a long time about it. Dean and I were both just recently in Pima County, Arizona, and talking about these exact same types of issues. Also, there's some legislation that's rolling around about dealing with some issues in our involuntary commitment legislation that is currently in place and how that could be tweaked so that we don't have people falling through the cracks. So I think those are all things to come in 2023, knowing that the link and also Safety and Justice Challenge people and legislators hopefully will be addressing all of those different issues, so. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. East Dakota Water Development District, we've heard about a situation in northwest Iowa where they're pumping water and shooting it up to Minnesota for Minnesota's use. Their aquifer is shallow enough that, in fact, their local river dries up. And the question is, what will we do if they start pumping water out of here and sending it to, say, Minnesota or northwest Iowa? I know our aquifer is like 70 feet deep. At Brookings, that same aquifer is 200 feet deep, but it's divided by quartzite up at Dell Rapids. Whatever flows over that rock there is what we get down here, but there is a water issue, and that water issue is only going to get worse. You know, we recently approved the, the city voted to allow that hog processing plant, which will use a lot of water. If that had, if they'd requested to put it in the county, we would not have had the water to provide for it. And I think that this has to be a top-level issue for all of us, all of you that continue in this job. So that's a liaison report.
Any other liaison reports? I'm just going to bring up, too, that we, last, or two weeks ago, we talked just briefly about having the Juvenile Justice Center on this commission meeting as a decision point. Since then, with more discussions, Commissioner Benega and I are both liaisons for the juvenile, juvenile detention center, and decided that it was in our best interest for the county and for the people that house their kids here in Department of Corrections until, wait until, we'll see if the legislators are interested in helping us with funding on a very expensive project. And so it's not a, it's not a going away, it's just that today was not the right day, and I don't believe the 27th is the right day. We'll be looking forward to that vote coming in the next couple of months. Just wanted to give our public an update since they knew we were pushing towards, or I was really pushing towards getting that done by the end of the year when I was done. But that will be coming in early of 2023 as we move forward and try to keep an eye on the interest rate, so. Commissioner Kerski?
In the same vein, last Wednesday, we were to have our South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board meeting, but I called the meeting because of the forecast. Well, it got moved to tomorrow. It won't be snowing as hard, but it'll be cold. But we will be meeting in Pierre, and I'm anticipating a fairly long meeting. It'll probably go from 11 to 5 or beyond, and we do have at least an update on at least six different legislative items that has a state association that we're watching. A lot of it has to do with jails and juvenile justice, and unfortunately, most of it is playing defense, but we're also trying to let our legislators know what they can do to help us and what, if they're considering action, what, how that may not help us. So it's what a lot of it amounts to. So we'll be in Pierre tomorrow.
Bender?
Lucky.
I wanted to update you that the Accessible Housing Board continues to meet. Sometimes I forget to give updates because we meet the first Wednesday of the month, so it's after a meeting, and then we have a couple weeks before we meet again. But in our last meeting, I mean, we continued to look hard at housing issues in Sioux Falls and in the surrounding areas. We have an opportunity to give input on funding that the city administers through various state and federal resources, and at our last meeting, we did approve some funding to allow the ICAP organization to purchase the old children's inn facility, and they have entered into an agreement with Bishop Dudley, where Bishop Dudley will manage some units that they're going to convert, that will house some of the families that have been in Bishop Dudley, so that that will help get those young kids out of that environment and over into a newer facility where they're really just around families. And it will help Bishop Dudley as they just continue to deal with overflow issues. We approved another tax credit housing project that will have quite a few units at a really low kind of poverty rate. So we continue to work on creative solutions. It continues to be a challenge, but it's been a, it's been a good working group. We had also filled a few, reappointed a couple people to the at-large positions and appointed a new member. So it's, it's been a really good group to be a part of, and I think that the transitions that we made into that group have really reinvigorated it, and the fact that we're able to work with the city on some funding gives us more meaningful input into some of the housing solutions that help all of our citizens.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, then I would look for non-action commission discussion. Commissioner Barth?
I have to use all of my possible talking time before I'm gone.
She's done.
Or I'll, I'll go home just ready to explode. You know, Minnehaha County is not remodeling our swimming pools. Wait a minute, we don't have any swimming pools. The city of Sioux Falls is remodeling several swimming pools. It's been said before that Minnehaha County, or any county, is where people go to do business with government. It's where you register to vote. It's where you get your marriage license. It's where you pay your taxes. We're the service station for government. And you know, you take a look at the, the other issues that we have here, one that I noticed in today's bills, and we don't read the bills like we used to, but there were 19 occurrences of a decedent transport by MedStar. Now, a dead person that dies without supervision is taken into our medical examiner, and the ambulance charges us $400 to pick that person up. 19 times in, in this billing period, we, we did that. You know, Commissioner Heiburger is talking about juvenile justice. The city of Sioux Falls doesn't have a jail. They don't have anything with caring for these people that are temporarily locked up. The minute that somebody is told, you're under arrest, and I, I've never been told that. The minute someone is told that, though, our, our clock starts running, and the county pays the bills. We are the service station for government, and I just wanted to pass that wisdom on.
Any others? Liaison reports, I think, right. And then we're on non-commission action discussion, and I have, I'm going to ask for just a moment of personal privilege and note that Ken McFarland is here. He was our past administrative officer, and he's here today, so Ken, nice to see you. And my parents, which I don't know what happened to my dad, but this is my mother who is sitting next to him, and my dad is here somewhere. There he is. There he is. Jim and Elsie Decray, now from Sioux Falls. Originally, I grew up in Colton, but my parents are here, and this is the first time they've been to a meeting, so that was my personal privilege today, so. Carol, did you have some additional things?
I just wanted to remind everybody that after we finish this, that we do have a reception for our retiring commissioners, Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Heiburger. You have one more meeting left, and we will officially recognize you during the meeting next week. But we do have a reception for you immediately following this, and if people are watching, we'll do a short program at 11 o'clock, so people have time to come down if they would like to go through and do this. It's a, it's always a heartfelt moment for us when we go through this kind of transition.
And I'll say, it's not my second to last meeting, because I have a whole bunch more meetings this week, and who knows what next week we'll bring, but my second to the last commission meeting, probably also for Jeff Barth, so. There are no other non-action, oh, Commissioner Barth?
I just want to say that Ken McFarland, sitting over there, is the guy that told me that the counties are the service station for government.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly true. Okay, then I would look for, there's no exception, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.